Just to tell people what's going on, Carl Carsten is here kindly agreed to give us a dry run of a filming and preparatory to kind of testing this out. We've got people that are part of Writers and Garden in other states and even other countries. I have a very avid student that's in Israel that wants to participate. Granted, she's asleep right now because they're eight hours ahead of us.
I will.
Well, and except that you're like mobile. So if we piped into her computer right now, she'd probably be okay. She's been in the Israeli military, so I'm not sure what kind of way. I'm just kidding, Grace. So, welcome. This is Writers and Garden, and this is a joint workshop or jointly hosted by Pumping Station One, which is where we are today. And we have Jessica Phong here, who is helping to host for South Side Hacker Space Chicago. And we have both types of members today. What I'd like to do first is go around the circle, and we're gonna do this again as a dry run because we have a new member as well, just to kind of get you acclimated to what we're doing today. So if you wouldn't mind saying what your name is and what your business idea is. And I know a couple of people already have come up with more business plans between last week and this week, so if you've done... Are you serious? That's awesome. So if you have new business ideas, I'd love to hear those too. So I'm A. Catherine Yun. I'm the founder of Writers and Garden. We are...
Sorry.
We are an organization dedicated to helping people get onto the page, whether that's from a writing standpoint, business planning, business writing, emails, if you want to become a better hacker, make more stuff, if you're finding yourself starting projects and not finishing, or not starting at all, we have workshops for that. We're really dedicated to helping people become more creative and stay more creative and tools to be strong. And my business plan idea is for the Writers and Garden. I want to take it into 501(c)(3) status by the end of the year, and so I have a business plan to do that. So that's me. Take it away.
Do I need to speak toward the camera?
Not at all.
My name is Pavan. I moved to Chicago a year ago, and I joined a project about two months ago, which was called the Chicago Wi-Fi Project. The aim of this was to expand, I think, while it was broadband, access to everyone in the city and do this cost-effective. As it turns out, we need a substantial kind of infrastructure to make that happen, and infrastructure is very expensive. The fixed costs for our program would be about $7 million. To get that kind of money, you're not gonna get it from... You have to go after investors. That's already difficult in this city in particular for reasons I still don't fully understand. But what I'm dealing with right now is a transformation of what used to be a nonprofit project into something that is for-profit. Because we have to compromise the needs of our clients, which are to have the best quality internet access possible and as little for it as possible. And we consider this something we want as well as users of them. And we have to balance that against the needs of financial stakeholders, which is to be a part of a dynamic, innovative, for-profit company that maximizes for turn around investment. So what I want as the outcome for today is to figure out a way to create written content for our website. Our technology's good. We have interesting programs lined up. We basically need to create a marketing presence that clearly expresses exactly who we are and what we can do for everyone.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Arturo Alvaroza, and I am interested in the off-the-profit business of arts humanities. And I... My idea has always been to be very off-the-profit, where I do kind of like Pumping Station One and South Side Hacker Space. To have an environment where everyone can learn from each other, and where everyone can go as artists, as a person, as an entrepreneur, what have you, mad scientist, anything. And the reason why this idea is prolonged in the nine was because I've always been raised by an off-the-profit, so I kind of have some emotion like that to the same kind of environment. And I've always wanted to create my own environment as well, and I thought it was a really great idea to see what it has as a... It's hard to say since it's our future architecture.
And so is your idea to actually build that space too? Not just say a Nisa space, but to actually create an environment for people?
Yeah.
Wow, great. Thank you. Hi. So you've created extra businesses. So say your name and what you're doing.
My name is Jessica, and I've been focusing mostly on SSH stuff, but have my own personal projects here and there. And the one that I was thinking about today focuses a lot on providing a variety of services and also education in a sense. So my friend and I realized that between the two of us, we have a lot of experience tackling very specific problems that happen to people maybe on a daily basis. Things just ranging from, I don't know how to cook something and feed myself, to, oh, I had this really awkward encounter with this person on the bus, how do I not do that next time? So the idea would be that you would either be able to outsource certain stuff, like, I just don't know how to rent a car, well, we'll do it for you, or you would have kind of like a workshop like this, or like a one-on-one session where you could sit down with us and we would take you step by step, like this is how you actually budget for something, this is how you make a to-do list and succeed at completing that to-do list. So it's kind of like life consultation, I guess. And so right now, it's just sort of like meeting out, like what are the things that people would actually feel they would like or need? Is this something that is purely individuals, or is this something that almost ends up being like, you know, for a company? Like, a lot of times, you know, get people come in, do like HR sort of improvement within the company, is that something that that's gonna turn into? I don't really know. But for right now, it's been definitely focused on just the individual as a person seeking this as either a service or as a way of kind of improving their lifestyle.
Awesome. And then are you still working on the podcast, or is most of your focus on this?
Um, it's kind of split. There are actually two, you know, folders on the Google Drive now, so no one's on the side right now.
Okay. Right now?
My name's Jeff. Initially, when I came here, I was looking at kind of a business on the side, just to make some extra money doing pictures and floor plans for real estate agents or people listing rentals. However, the past four years, I've been working for a small business in the suburbs that we manufacture labels, like sticky paper, pretty much. And not as aggressive as I wish we were as a company. There's only like four or five people that work there, and most of it's family, and they're pretty much just content doing what they're doing, even if the walls are closing in, so to speak. And I just, partially because of this class, and partially because I just finished the Jeff Bezos biography, my thoughts have been a little more aggressive. And I feel like there's a lot, for example, our machines are punch presses with a 12-inch bed, and a lot of... Oh, it was probably while you were still working there, they're creasing to 20-inch sheets and getting a lot bigger, and they just simply don't have the capacity to run that. But that's almost becoming the new standard because print shops, instead of buying printing equipment now, are leasing it. So it's all per click. So if you can get the biggest sheet in there, that's only one versus an eight and a half by 11, that would still be one click. And so I just feel like there's a lot of market space to grab that we're not taking advantage of, and that would be a full-time venture.
Awesome.
Hello, I'm Steve. I want to make a internet animation show with a big emphasis on multimedia expansion on the whole thing. And I also got a lot of really small business ideas that I just kind of think would be really fun if I could just do them. I don't really know how to get a small business off the ground though.
Like, when you say small business ideas, what do you mean?
Well, it's like today, I was thinking about making chalk for kids. And, you know, it was just a fun little idea. It was like, it's gonna be the El Dorado chalk company where every color, every color in the rainbow plus a stick of gold. And I think it'd be really awesome. And I thought, you know, it's a really small idea. It's not something that I think would be like Game Buster's bananas, but, you know, it'd be something cute and fun, and I just think it'd be interesting, you know, something that the world needs.
Yeah. That's awesome.
And, you know, a lot of other ideas like that. And it's sort of like, yeah, I can learn how to make chalk, and I'm, you know, it'd be fun, and making it out of the house, I don't really think I'd make any money off of it, but, I don't know.
Have you considered Etsy? Have you heard of that before?
Yes, and I've read through a book on it once before, but I don't know.
There's a couple of them. Shelley is part of Pumping Station One, has a website that she really likes, and I'm just innovating the name of it, it's a competitor to Etsy.
Artfire.
That doesn't sound like it, but is that another one?
Artfires, A-R-T.
Art.
Art.
Oh, Artfire, I'm sorry.
There's a few like more specialized ones. Etsy's kind of general, it also has like vintage stuff as well as a category they accept. Artfire's more like painting and sculpture, a little higher price points.
Didn't Etsy just acquire like a tech one too? Where people will build boards for you and stuff?
Really?
Like Digital Street or something? Something, but just where Etsy...
I don't really see selling chalk on Etsy gonna happen.
I could see that, but I still think like...
It's like, yeah, I want the sticks to look like Aztec totem poles, and like the mascot's gonna be a walking golden priest.
I totally see that on Etsy, actually.
I still think crayons would be easier, just because you can get an easier binder, and I think chalk is just pressed and getting anything like glittery into that, it's gonna just get weird, especially... But just something wax-based, you can literally just like get some wax and just melt pig put into it.
I mean, like, yeah.
These guys are...
Kante crayons.
Yeah, they're one of the basics. They're very chocolatey. Is it just like a French tree?
Grand street.
Grand.
I guess.
I don't know if that's what you're gonna pick that up from.
More or less, I mean, but just a little less, you know, something accessible, something that'd be not impossible for one person to run, but, you know, something that's to where it's not gonna be like my entirely livelihood is tied up in chalk.
Well, doing stuff that's kind of free for business and being fun is really useful.
Yeah, I mean, like, I got a lot of little ideas like that. Like, I wanted to make a... I wanted to make my own bottled water company, call it Steve's Hose.
Steve's Hose?
Yeah. Get a big drink out of Steve's Hose. Great slogans everywhere. Gonna make a, what's it, a health drink company.
Yeah. I really still think you should just word all these ideas into your comic.
Yeah. No, and then there's...
And just...
When there's a thing I'm actually working on, which is the comic.
Do you ever read Calvin and Hobbes? Where there would sometimes be like many stories about just some little like early idea that just developed into this, the transmogrifier goes boink. That's great.
Wow. I think doing it through the comics might be really good, because you've built like a basic market share, and then the merchandise can be like, it's kind of like CG.
Well, I mean, like, that goes back to the multimedia, uh, marketing empire, that's the thing I want to do for the website. I mean, yeah.
What I think is that the products can be merchandising for the comic.
Yeah.
And awesome.
I don't know, it's something I kind of like to think about, just be like, yeah, I want to make a drink called Tomato Problem. And I hate tomatoes, and I don't know why I want to make a fruit drink based off of tomatoes, but yeah, I just kind of like the packaging. I want to design the packaging for it.
Awesome.
Yeah. The mascot is a frightening tomato specter holding a knife.
Okay. I like it.
That's how you smell, that's how you sell tomato drinks. Tomatoes are gross.
I'm Andrew. I want to build stop-motion components. I was looking online, because there's sort of like, there's the ultra-low end, which is just twisted little bits of wire that break, like when you're in the middle of a shot, and screw up hours and days of work. Then there's the sort of like medium-low end, there's a couple of companies that make these like stainless steel parts that you can make armatures out of, and they're cheesy and have limited range of motion, and they're kind of bulky, and just generally bad. And then there's, you know, the $5,000, $10,000, like custom made out of like aircraft-grade aluminum, and stainless steel, and tool steel, and all sorts of like fancy materials. I kind of wanted to do something somewhere in the middle of the $200 and the $5,000 range, like the lower middle, we're talking like one grand, um, 500 to one grand. I found this afternoon, when I was looking up references for drawing the fancy stuff, someone who's actually at that market point, so that's fun. Basically, I still make little tiny metal robot-looking things, and they're fake robots, that's the important thing.
Well, we'll be doing some competitive analysis later on in the workshop, like the weeks, and you'll get an opportunity to see who else is in your space. I had that same experience. I was doing a market research class, and I used Writers and Garden as my test case, and one of the things we had to do was a literature review. You basically go online and find out who's doing what you want to do, and I was really crushed, because there's a group in Chicago that has 1,300 members on EDA, whose mission is to help people get on the page. I'm like, they stole my idea. But what you can do is figure out, what do you have that differentiates you? How can you differentiate yourself from them if you haven't thought about that before? And who, if you get really clear about who your target market is, that's where you're gonna really help yourself. If you know exactly what your customer looks like, what they make, where they live, what they buy, how much they make, how educated they are, how they consume their stuff, what they, you know, your consumers, if you're going for the general public in the inner city, might look one way, if you're going for people in Glencoe, they're all the other way for Wi-Fi. Your customers for the comic are gonna look all sorts of different ways. If you've ever gone to Comic Con, there's a whole wide range of demographic, and the better that you get at figuring that out, you can beat the competition. Don't feel bad just because they're doing it. You can also find out what they're doing and do it better.
Yeah, he's machining stuff out of brass, he's like turning brass parts. Problem with brass is it rots the foam rubber you cast around it, so, yeah.
And it tarnishes it, but I think, wouldn't that be a downside?
Not really, because you cast, yeah, you cast foam rubber over the puppet or plastics or various materials. The problem is his stuff will rot through in, depending on the thickness, months.
Oh, gosh.
But you generally don't use something that long.
But you can use the environmental awareness maybe as part of your marketing. I know that Earth first went after Mitsubishi in 1992 for providing rainforest press board for Holly Materino sets, and it rocked the entertainment business, because Mitsubishi no longer did that after that, and we're talking millions of dollars and change in the months. I'm not suggesting that you...
That I destroy this...
Exactly. But that's a differentiation point, and hopefully if this gentleman is watching this broadcast, he's not like, I'm going to hurt you. So, no, it's not meant as obstruction or as a disrespect, and disrespectfulness, I just mean that it's a differentiation point for you. Like Coke and Pepsi. People who like Coke are really fanatical about Coke, people that like Pepsi are really fanatical about Pepsi, never give Coke to a Pepsi person. I'm trying.
This is Chicago, it's an RC town.
It's, I don't know that it's true, because I've met Coke people here. I will say one word to you as Chicagoans, I'm from California, full disclosure, pizza.
I love pizza.
Y'all are crazy about pizza.
California pizza kitchen is terrible.
The California pizza kitchen is not pizza. Or is it California?
Pizza in general, like, we just eat a lot of pizza, or specifically...
Oh, no. Y'all are religious about which pizza, which pizza is good. I have two friends here, went to the dinner at Blue Malati's, this is the best pizza, anywhere in the studio, it's great. So I went to a friend's, he wanted to go out to pizza with me, I found the best place in Chicago, he's like, oh, yeah, really, which one? And I said, Blue Malati's. The two of them actually got heated with each other over pizza.
What did the other guy say then?
I don't want to know, because my wife does.
Don't say pizza, you're gonna own it, it's terrible.
Yeah.
I don't call it, I think it was, and then they say Giordano's.
Giordano's is good.
And then Genozi's.
It's not bad.
Genozi's, and then J.B. Alberto's, is what I like.
Genozi's is not bad.
And my husband doesn't like Blue Malati's, all respect to Mr. Malati, for the cornstarch, but he likes the J.B. Alberto's, so we don't even agree on anything. That's how bad pizza is.
See, people in New York think that deep dish pizza in California, in Chicago, is actually the casserole.
Exactly. My husband's from Philly, he likes that flat, foldable stuff.
I actually don't like deep dish.
They have to recommend Armand's.
Throw that out there, I really don't like deep dish.
Do you like that?
Yeah. But you can know, they do, they just started offering deep dish, but...
I like, I like the flattest, crispiest pizza ever. I don't, I don't like deep dish.
It's a different type of pizza, like sometimes I want deep dish, sometimes I want, you know, New York style.
I think the cheesiness in the deep dish is what sets me off.
I think that is why I love it.
And the crust, because like, I want more vegetables, I guess.
Like, some days, I just want to do all cheese and like bread as an excuse for not just like pounding a block of cookie.
Like, it feels like a deep dish, and they just got a round of cheese, and just laid it inside the pan with the crust, and then drops the veroni on top.
So it's true.
Veroni goes under, by the way.
Maybe a tomato, and that was it, and then it melted, and it created deep dish.
You just broke my point.
We have a big dilemma, I'll take some of them.
Yeah, seriously, that's how Chicago is. And this is a good example to segue back to what we're doing, branding. If you can get your product, service, concept, whatever you want to call it, to be that important to the people that are consuming it, you've won. You have absolutely won the war. And if you don't think this is a war, and you don't think there's other people out there competing for the exact same money that you're competing for, you're fooling yourself. I've had people tell me, it's not, we're not a business, we're a blah blah blah. That's fantasy. If people are giving you money for something, it's a business, I guarantee you, they think of it as a business, because they're giving you something that they put in hours to make. And there's tons of competition for Starbucks, pizza, you know, food, gas, books, other entertained movies, other things. So the better we get at this, the better off we are. Who worked on their mandala during the week? Do we want to share some of that you guys did?
I just joined. I didn't know that this began like...
Totally fine.
It's your excuse for everything.
No.
I was actually born yesterday.
Congrats. I know, several other people. Yeah, yeah. So, what we're gonna do, let's talk a little bit about what the mandala is, so that you're kind of on board with that. And then what we're gonna do after that is we'll share kind of our mandalas, and people have an opportunity to brainstorm ideas. So in your case, if you have questions about your business concept, and you want to brainstorm some ideas, I've actually got some for you, I can share with you, and I'm sure other people might. And then each of us will do that. The idea is that we would have a completed mandala, who actually completed theirs? I did not.
I just went for the other two, I didn't do the digital.
Okay. With how to do it? Okay, no problem. Did anyone actually complete it? No? All right, well then we'll work on that today. And then what we want to also cover is the guides, and this can be something that's a little bit touchy-feely, or it can be something very hungry. By touchy-feely, I mean maybe your guide is Benjamin Franklin, or Buddha, or a pharaoh for you. What's up?
Mom.
Mom? You got my mom, I'm not gonna argue with that.
She's a little weird.
Your guides may also be people that you know in your life, that you can actually bounce ideas off of, share with them what you're trying to do, and they can help you kind of bring it into reality. It's not a bad idea to go to the person that's the most skeptical in your environment, once you have your plan together, and say, all right, what do you think? This is my best, most left brain. Now, you want to be careful that skeptical doesn't mean makesayer, because we all know the kind of person that thinks that every idea is going to fail before it starts. Those are not good people to use as sounding boards. People that are good to use as sounding boards might be a former boss, or someone else that's done something similar to what you're trying to do, and I don't even necessarily mean in the same industry, but someone else that's trying to start a business, or tried to create something, or even people that are athletes in extreme sports. My boss, for example, is a triathlete. Triathletely running and writing novels, which is what I do, are actually very similar disciplines. So he really understands the process of trying to write and publish a book, because he's done the Iron Man twice. So that's what we'll be doing today. So what is the mandala? To go over a brief recap, the book that we're using is called The Creative Entrepreneur. This is a phenomenal book. It was recommended to me by my career counselor, Johnny Lucanville, who I'm gonna try and bring in actually for a workshop, she's interested in talking to us. She's with JPS Chicago. You ought to consider using them at a DUMAN center for your ideas there.
I went to a talk at the public library, the DUMAN Center?
D-U-M-A-N, and they are a project of JPS Chicago, and they're a small business center that provides counseling, workshops, networking, and even mentoring for small businesses to get off the ground. So any of you that are trying to do that, whether it's nonprofit or for-profit, ought to consider going to them. They have a nominal business plan template on their website that is available for free. A lot of their content is free. So this book is about using artist techniques as well as left-brain business techniques. She is a visual artist that became, went to school and got an MBA in finance, so I really relate with her. I'm a novelist and a textile artist, and I got an MBA in finance. So bridging those two things is really important to me, and that's where this book comes from. We'll be using left-brain and right-brain tools today. A lot of the tools we'll be using will be very right-brained, that's why I brought all of her stuff to play with on the table. So she has you create an eight-part mandala of your business picture. What's interesting to me about this is that this covers basically the comprehensive set of skills that you need to bring an idea from idea stage to profitability. And each of these is kind of on a binary nature, so there's heart and meaning, skills and tools, gifts and flow, and value and profitability. Many times, we will be good at two or maybe even three of these, but it's rare that we will just come out of the box and be good at all four. And that's okay. That's why we have each other, that's why there's workshops, and that's why there's classes that we can take to get better at stuff that we're not really good at, and learn what we can hire that we may not want to do ourselves, like say, hire a good accountant or someone that's a social media specialist. What we've done the last two meetings is work on the first exercises for creating the mandala. And in doing that, the first one is the Mandala Meeting. There's a number of questions that you ask yourself to work on in your journal. If you're not a good writer, don't worry about it, it doesn't need to be grammatically correct. What this will do is help you really get clarity around what your idea is. Then we went through gifts and flow, and the idea there is to do what you're naturally good at, and to be able to understand what that is, because when we're doing what we're naturally good at, it doesn't really work. And we can get better at stopping doing what we're not very good at, or what we are good at until we're good. Then values and profitability, this is kind of the left-brain business stuff, figuring out what does your customer want, are you gonna get them to pay more, which is what a lot of us that are artistic don't really think about, because it's our art, man, it means something. Well, if the consumer doesn't think so, they're not gonna give you money for it. And the last one is leadership skills and management tools, like doing things, or all of what I consider to be kind of an unfun stuff in business. And then today, what we're working on is this mandala. Once you do these four petals, you create a complete picture of what your business idea looks like. There's a couple of examples in the book. You could go very literally and create this four-part mandala literally, and then put in images that you really like. This one has a lot of words to it. These are very image-heavy, so you could put a lot of, like, for your comic, you could do comic images maybe. And then these are all different ideas. She's got stuff that's folded down in the book that you actually can interact with. And so that's what we're doing, or going to implement tonight. What questions do you have? Nothing at all? Awesome. That mean I just put you to the lady part?
Does she have a track record of businesses adopting that model and succeeding?
She does. I don't know what those are, but you could look at the book. I know that the career counselor that I've worked with felt that they were very, was very powerful, and that they've seen people that do the system that she has very successfully. And the career counselor that I worked with has used it herself. Business plans are pretty straightforward, where people fall down... straightforward. Where people fall down a lot of times is on either not translating their passion onto the page, or not getting concrete enough about what the plan should be. And this helps you do both of those. So, it's, it's one approach to solve a problem. It's not like the only or the best. So... What I would like to do for the next little bit, do we wanna actually play with our own mandalas for a little while, and just do some working time on that? Or do you wanna bounce some ideas to people? Feel like they wanna actually get something for their generation?
I'm very confused. Yeah, I don't understand. Um, I don't understand.
Maybe you could take us step by step, creating a mandala, translating what we have already thought about and written about into something that could be more visual.
Okay.
I think that works a little.
Sure. So, if you take, for those of you that haven't looked, if you take a look at page nineteen, this will show you what the basic mandala looks like. So, if you've got your sheet of paper that you're gonna use, you could go very literally, and we'll say gifts and flow in this center part. And I always do a rough draft of my drawings, so I'm just gonna do that here. So, I have gifts and flow, and then I've got heart and meaning, and I actually do mine exactly opposite of how they have in the book. There we go. And then, on the diagonal, we've got skills and tools. And on the cross, we've got profitability and value. So, one way, if you're very verbal, meaning words have a lot to you, throw out some ideas. Jessica, have any issues with guinea pig? What are some of the concepts you came up with for heart and meaning? Some of the answers to the questions.
Um, see. I said that I've always wanted to make things with my hands. I like to listen strong, emotional reactions from people. So, whether that's like, it's written, or they hear it, or they make it, whatever that process is, they have a reaction to what it is that they're being presented with.
And specifically, an emotional one?
Yes.
A question.
Yes.
Can this only be applied to, for you to first do any kind of a job? Cause when I heard Jessica say it, I like to make things with my hands. I'm wondering, could a manual labor use the creative mandala?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because you would look at, let's say, okay, what does a manual labor feel strongly about? Heart and meaning would be, "I make the world make sense." Or, "I..."
Craftsmanship.
"...value craftsmanship. I value making things by my hands, having a connection to things that are made." And then, gifts and flow might be, "I'm phenomenal with tools. There's not been a tool invented that I don't know how to use. I value competency. I like being good at things." Maybe this type of person doesn't like to read a lot, so they may not be book-learned, because they wanna shop all the time. So, they don't care about books about woodworking. They wanna actually make, you know, something tangible. And then, skills and tools, leadership skills and management tools, might be, alright, if they're not good at writing, what can they do that would be for a website? Photographs. Maybe they would take those photographs themselves. Maybe they would find someone that would help them to create website content. Maybe they would use Dragon Naturally Speaking to speak into a computer to create that content, because they don't like to type. My co-author, for example, is dyslexic, and she cannot spell very well because of the dyslexia. She still can write books. There's many compensations for things. And so, understanding what skills and tools you need to be successful, as we'll use a manual labor as our example, as say, a furniture maker, those are the things that you need to understand those. And it'll make you successful, whether you're an entrepreneur in a company, or an entrepreneur for your own company. And then finally, value and profitability. If you wanna make wagon wheels, because you're absolutely passionate about the craft of wagons being drawn by a horse...
They're coming back.
You might not necessarily wanna do that, because you've looked at the market and thought, "You know what? They're probably not gonna come back." Or...
I looked at the horse's mandala. Wants to be an artist.
Well, that actually, what I was gonna say is, maybe you need to be living somewhere where there are Amish people. Amish people use horses and carts. So, if you really, really feel com, you know, confident, "I really wanna make wagon wheels," okay. So, value and profitability. Where are the people living that wanna buy your stuff? Maybe it's Africa. Maybe they want scrim, or not scrimshots, what's it called?
Rikshaw.
Rikshaw. Maybe they need rickshaws. Rikshaws are coming back from the city of Chicago. Maybe you wanna build some really funky rickshaws. There you go. So, and there are, there is a big movement right now for environmental awareness to do human-powered lawn care, meaning they don't use gas-powered lawn mowers. They have the kind of heat push, the push mowers. And it takes more physical effort, but they get the benefit of not being overweight, because they're gonna be in shape doing it. So, understanding that value and profitability, along with all the other things, yeah, absolutely. It's very, it's pretty much any idea I could think. So... Alright, so you like to make things with your hands, elicit a strong emotional reaction. What else?
Make things for friends is what I had.
So, community? Is that a correct restatement of that?
Yeah.
Collaboration.
Is collaboration a good way to put it?
Collaboration, that's a great way, yeah.
Alright. Anybody else have heart and meaning stuff they're having trouble figuring out how to translate?
Right. One of the issues that I have with the way most people get internet service is that it's your corporate ISPs, and they've slowly been selling people these rights for a long time now. Um, and most wifi service that you had, you know, public area, is totally unsecure. If you try and, and it can get as far as Google will, they're already doing it. Doesn't make any sense. Um, and they have like, like the NSA, so, kind of harvest or information. And it's basically an instance, where also trying to override the neutrality, and make it slowly impossible for anyone who's not wealthy to get mobile broadband access. It used to be, just, a brief aside, it used to be against the FCC's rules for internet service providers to have like tiered fee, where you have to pay for to get faster service. But they've kind of found a way around that by creating a fast lane, which is kind of gonna be the standard for the next generation. And everyone who doesn't pay up, whether you're a business owner or a customer, is basically gonna have, you know. And that's something people should be wary about, because they're making war on their customers.
I would say, my translations of that would look like, on the heart and meaning side, free access to technology, confidentiality, security, you have to get clear what you mean by that. And small, uh, consumer service, as opposed to a large corporate, like, I don't know. I don't tend to like negative statements like anti-corporate, because in terms of thinking about how to do affirmations, the subconscious mind does not understand the negative part, so it'll bring about the negative thinking that's which one. So, if you can come up with a way of casting that in positive fashion on this scale, that's how that would look. And then if you found, if you were verbally oriented, I'm very wordy, so this is how I would do it, with words. And literally just handwriting it in, or crayons, or do some funky, maybe. I like to do, in answer to Jessica's question about how to do this, I like to actually decide, okay, heart and meaning is gonna be blue, so I'm literally just gonna cover across it like that. And then I might do something else. Or maybe you, if you, who is doing the collage? Were you, you were collecting images, right?
Yeah, still have.
Awesome. Do you wanna hold up what you're doing?
This is from what we did last week. But, so like, one of my things that I'm passionate about, or I forget what exactly I answered, but, um, I guess specifically a Mustang, but, uh, I wanna rebuild a car from the ground up. I take it down to the nuts and bolts, and same thing with a building. I strip it down to the studs and do the plumbing, electric, everything, myself. Just to get a, you know, well-rounded understanding of it.
If you need pictures of ugly welded masks, I totally got you covered.
That was totally a non sequitur.
No. He's rebuilding the car from the ground up. He's gonna need to weld.
Are you gonna need to weld to rebuild your car?
There is rust.
Wow, alright, fair enough.
Rainbow cars, cars and pedals.
And anymore? So, does that help kind of clarify some of this? And then on each of these scales, for value and profitability, maybe value to you and profitability to you literally means money.
I'm still a little lost on the flow of gifts.
Okay. Let me say one more thing about profitability, and then we'll turn to flow and gifts. Keep in mind that profitability may not mean money to you. It may mean community security. It may mean regular meals. It may mean a barter economy. It doesn't necessarily mean money. So, don't feel like, you hear the word profitability, and it translates to money. That's a very American interpretation, and that may not mean what you mean. So, what does profitability mean to you? What do you want your business to give you? And if you can get really concrete about that, you might be able to find partnerships in the marketplace to be able to make happen what you're trying to make happen. Good at that?
I don't understand.
Oh, you took a big breath like you were gonna say something?
No, 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 just, thinking thought out loud for a change.
Okay, fair enough. So, gifts and flow. What are some of the things that you put on your gifts, uh, section?
Uh, I don't get it.
Ah! Oh, okay. Let's go back to gifts, and we'll look at some of these questions. So, the problem is value.
Oh!
What do you do while, uh, you barely have to exert any effort in doing?
And that might be drawing.
Uh-huh.
If you're a comic, that might mean being funny. Might mean brainstorming, coming up with ideas. It might mean writing. What would you say, just off the cuff, without thinking about it?
Uh, brainstorming, creativity, follow-through, due diligence. Uh, that's awesome.
Wait, did you say outsourcing?
Uh, due diligence. Did you say outsourcing? No, but that was one of my things.
That, that's very interesting.
Cause you wanted, I remember from the first meeting, I think, you wanted to outsource actually with China.
Yeah.
And develop relationships with vendors there?
I already got some contacts over in China already, and I just wanna foster new ones and more of them.
Would you say that relationship building is something you're really good at?
Pretty good.
Like, does it sort of have a touch? Does he sort of walk through life and fall into friends?
Yeah, it's kinda...
Awesome.
Impressive, I gotta say.
That is a real skill, if no one's ever fed that back to you. Many, many people, how many here find it difficult to network? Yeah. A lot of technology people particularly are introverted, and they don't particularly wanna talk to people.
Okay.
You know, and the ones that are really good at that, don't necessarily recognize it as a skill. But I would say, relationship building might be a way to put that. I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
Alright, so then what are, what's flow?
Flow is when you're doing something, what's something you adore doing? You'd do it if you didn't, even if you didn't have to. Even if you weren't getting paid, you would just, you have a whole Sunday of yourself. What do you do?
Um, usually then it's, uh, I'll Sunday myself. Usually I read. Um, I like to read, do a little writing and draw.
How do you feel when you're writing and drawing?
Pretty good.
Time pass quickly? All of a sudden, you look up and it's four o'clock in the afternoon?
Depends on, depends on which part I'm working on.
That's flow.
Okay.
So, the better you can get at identifying, surfers talk about that too. When you get right into the point of the wave, where are you flowing with the wave? I realize I'm talking in Chicago and seeing what I've ever seen here.
Shouldn't brush the waves.
Okay.
We got a, yeah, like a couple of years ago.
That's not a great flaw to talk about. But no, that point where you are effortlessly doing duende in the dance is what it says. Duende. Nevermind, yeah.
When you're in the zone.
When you're in the zone. Ah! What are you thinking, Richard?
I think I might have to take some time myself to finish. I'm not gonna be up there in a while, please.
That would be totally fine. If you don't get it done today, it's not, you have not failed. If you get this done over the next eight weeks, you will have succeeded. I mean, this is not something you wanna just do. If you can just do it on the paper, it will have value. And the more thought you put into it, the more valuable it will be. So...
I think the weakest point happens to the follow-through, but I think a lot more follow-through would be there.
Then I would say that would go on the leadership skills that you need to develop.
Uh-huh.
In there, um, the managerial tools and leadership skills, leadership skill would be a follow-through, learning how to do that. Learning that procrastination does not mean that you're lazy. Procrastination means that you're blocked. And there are tools for getting out of blocks. You don't know what those tools are, that's okay. That's one of the reasons writers and garden exists. And one of my passions, I'm going back to the meaning here, is helping people figure out what those tools are. That's what I spend a ton of my time doing. So that you can make the comic, and make this comic book empire, and I can be like, "Hey, I know that guy. He doesn't recognize me anymore, but I knew who won."
Oh, these original breakfast machines.
Hey, man, he's got two hundred people in line at Comic-Con for an autograph, you know, by an autograph. Autograph?
An autograph.
An autobiography.
Right, on the spot.
Brain.
Full line, every single one wants their own personalized autobiography. Like, well, this is what happened. I was born a poor black child.
You were not.
He was.
Faker. So, what are the questions? Where are you stuck?
Different, differentiating the mandala, things we have, there's things we want, like, are you skilled, et cetera?
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, multiple colors and markers, there we go.
Yep, there are plenty of markers and crayons. So, let's see, where are we on time? It is ten of eight. Do you wanna go for half an hour to play with the mandala? If you come up with questions, just shout them out?
Yeah.
Okay. Carl, if you feel like pausing, that's totally fine. What is mind mapping? Mind mapping is an alternative to a left-brain sequential list-making process. What does that mean? Typically, when you wanna come up with an idea, you could say, "A, my idea. B, my idea is a dog. Dogs have four legs. Dogs with four legs have puppies. Puppies also have four legs." It's very sequential, stepwise. How to get into the building? Walk up to the door, turn the door handle, open the door, walk through the door, pull the door shut. A mind map, on the other hand, is for how, those of us that are right-brained think, which if you've never met anybody that is right-brained, you may have, because I am extremely right-brained. I will show you what works for me. What is your idea? It's wifi, free access for the city of Chicago, correct?
It wasn't my idea. I missed your, your idea.
Okay, but for your website, is that your idea for the website?
Uh, content creator.
Yes, but what content are you trying to create?
I'm, I'm very outcome-oriented, so I tend to work that way.
That's fine. What is the outcome?
Everybody cancels their Comcast subscription. And whether they go to Luxor somewhere else, I don't really care.
Truly a perfect world.
Okay, so...
Gone, son.
We wanna say, for the website, your goal is, you want people to understand that Comcast is bad.
Not exactly. Um, I think everybody already understands that Comcast is bad. They were rated the worst company in America this year by Consumerism. That's not, you know, that, that doesn't get people to have to take action possibly. So, um, my thinking is, okay, Comcast is bad, so we need an alternative. We can become that alternative. We have technology that is maybe a year old. Um, it's an alternative to varying cables. What we have is a technology that's marketed by the company that provides it, is air fire. It's a twenty-four gigahertz narrow band that broadcasts a gigabit signal through line of sight. And basically, you don't have to mess around with fiber optic cables anymore. You can just shoot this stuff across the city, and, um, through a hub and spoke network, give everyone access with a redundant, um, system where allergies are virtually impossible.
How do you handle brick?
What is, sorry?
Brick. There's a lot of masonry in the city. How do you handle brick with the signal? Does it get bogged down by brick?
Nope, it pretty much goes... Nope, it pretty much goes through everything except like, you know. I don't know if you'll get a signal under a roof in the subway, but other than that.
And if you put repeaters in the subway, you potentially could, right? Alright, so repeaters for harvest area. Is it on a radio signal? Do you know? Maybe I know that, okay. Um, so what I have so far is, basically you've told me what you want your content to be, right? You've got your central argument, which is, what is this technology made? It should be free. It should be universal, meaning everybody has access regardless of income and regardless of geographical location in the city, correct? So free, universal, consistent and stable, meaning that there aren't allergies. So your first four paragraphs are those four paragraphs. And your header paragraph is your thesis statement. This is my idea of how you can write that.
Can I keep that page?
Yeah, you cannot take it out of this book, but you can definitely.
Take a photo with your camera, that's what I always do.
Yeah, take a photo. No, you shouldn't. Bring scissors near this.
We know that financial connections and we can pay a lot of money to just do the job.
Well, and it's the, so the central thesis is, you know, free and easy access to internet for everyone to reduce the digital divide, right? Eliminate the digital divide or whatever. If your company has a tagline, that's where this would go.
I want the free, that's great.
This is a dry run in this class, which is why it's for a fifteen bucks. I want to charge for it. Four thousand bucks, okay? But some reason, that's partly wet and teddy, all the guys. Um, but that's how a mind map works. So if you're sitting, and what I mentioned about writing, this is easy to, there are things that are easy to do, believe this was. When you can figure this out, that's your gift of flow. Follow where I'm going. So within this whole like implementation plan, where is your gift of flow? You may not know that right now, cause I'm putting you on the spot, but as you're doing the mandala for this process, if you can figure that out, maybe it's building bridges between businesses. Maybe it's finding community organizations that are passionate about what you're passionate about and getting them to help you.
I tend to find out what I'm good at retrospect. Like, I tried a million different things and I actually succeeded at one or two, so I must be good at this.
That's a perfectly acceptable way to do it. You might like the book What Color Is Your Parachute by Richard Nelson Mills. It's available at the Chicago Public Library. You can also buy it. He's got a program in there called The Job Flower. And it's an eight-part picture of your ideal job. And one of the exercises that you do is go through every job you've ever had. And every skill in each of those jobs that you utilized. And then you can make a determination of, okay, this skill, I didn't realize I had, but I kinda like it. This skill. Totally know that I have. Well, like making, I can make a really kick-ass hot fudge sandwich. I don't like making that, but I can. And that can also then become fodder for your website content, potentially. Is what skills you have, you can talk about them in your website. Does that help you at all?
Well, maybe. I'm not really coming at this from entrepreneurship angle and resources. It's not really my project to take ownership. So when I did the mandala, instead of focusing on what my, what I have, I'm thinking about what the project needs. And if I happen to be able to help any of these things myself, then I'll be of real value to the project in this.
And you might inspire yourself in the process to create some kind of business consultancy for project implementation.
That sounds like gorgeous.
Possibly. My job is as a writer and as teaching people how to get on the page and become unblocked. Do you have your phone? Do you wanna try to write this? I can hope that, but I'm not sure if it makes sense.
It does make sense. That seems like something you would write if you were gonna do your life. I don't know what I would do, like, if you gave me your rough draft, I couldn't turn it into a same kind of final product.
It won't be. It'll be your, it'll be in your words and through your lens, I think. I managed to get glue all over my face. If you could figure out how to do chalk that didn't make a mess, look at this. Seriously, that didn't go stable, I think that would have a.
That's part of what the joy that children find though in the chalking is that they get pretty toe hands, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You and I were very different children, cause I hated that.
No, I'm saying.
You're probably washing your hands in the rec room.
You're saying other children.
Some children.
I remember, I wasn't let outside as a child.
Your parents are like, please, make a mess in here.
So to give you an idea of some thoughts I had when I was doing my mandala, this isn't exactly the mandala shared by any means. But what I did was I put my business idea in the center and then I had different like daughter style ideas for the business. So for you, your armatures idea might be, I don't know enough about armatures to probably be useful, but maybe it's partnerships with small manufacturing.
It'd be more with like film companies partnership would be better to do.
Do you have a list of all the film?
I'd be doing the manufacturing myself.
Do you have a list of all the film companies in the area?
No.
That would be something to put together, homework. Um, I would say make it regional and then do a national and then international, because my nation is based in Croatia. Croatia has.
Uh, they're like, uh, puppet films, yeah. Uh, they do more of like a traditional whip thing, like Yuri Drenka style, but.
But that maybe because that's what they have access to. Having access to an American company, sure.
Found the email. It was the same that I was looking on the S C M L screen.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It was exactly the same, like, I sent mine a password.
Totally okay. Totally okay.
So I have a question. I'm not in a particularly inflexive environment, but I would like to go home this evening and spend maybe two hours, let's say. Just writing stuff, content for the website. Is there a particular kind of mindset that you tend to have? It's like, from inside.
I would say that I start my brainstorming by hand. On paper, because I am very right brained. I don't know whether you're right brained or left brained. Um, if you're very left brained, you might do a bullet list in Word and just think of everything you could possibly have on a website. And everything you could possibly want, whether it's relevant or not, it doesn't matter. The rule in brainstorming is everything above on the page, everything. And if you, that's the rule of brainstorming. And you always throw in a bullshit answer and you're stuck. You suddenly say, alright, I'm supposed to do this brainstorming thing. What do I do? Alright, I'm gonna have a website for Chicago, free access to technology. What's that other thing she said?
Yeah, I wouldn't do this brainstorming on something that takes physical evidence.
Well, I.
You don't have to.
Yeah. Um, I actually would organize it, because your brain is going to get full of all sorts of computer.
I'm gonna sit there and show you no one to tell me what's the thing at the end of it.
Well, it's, whatever is gonna work for you. You ask me what works for me. So what I would say is you're looking at my notebook of everything. There are many reasons why you do not touch this book. You can take a picture of it, but this literally is every thought that I have that I write down. Some of them are shareable, which I share. Some of them are dimensional.
Cause for some of the pages to be moved together as a preventative measure.
Right, exactly. But the purpose of that is that we have this monkey mind, which is a Zen concept. The monkey in Zen philosophy is a very playful, sometimes destructive, likes to eat everything. If we had a monkey on this table, he'd probably throw everything up in the air and have lots of fun.
That'd be awesome.
Arturo would love it. We'd all hit Arturo and then he would ignore our emails.
That's the paid version of the class.
Yeah, right.
Which is not four thousand. It's four, yeah.
It's eight thousand.
It's eight thousand, yeah.
I like this whole value and profitability. I like this. Where you're all with it. Point being, you get all that.
I can't even imagine, like, for the deposit you'd have to put down.
And then.
Uh, we can negotiate.
Go away, have some coffee, come back.
Don't make them in your cage.
There's no substitute. Coming way said, writing is the art of applying ass to chair. What? There's no glamour to it.
It's also left handed.
I don't think the chair is what you're supposed to be aiming for if you're doing left handed.
Okay, moving on.
I'm just the host of the fires. Anyone tried one of those standing desks?
I have not. I've seen them.
I'm two ways in.
I've heard that if you spend, we're sitting down several hours a day, it can actually have like epigenetic effects. Where your legs stop producing essential metabolic enzymes and you die like ten years old.
Standing all day also kinda sucks unless you got one of those like the pads. Hopefully you guys have. Oh man, we burned through a bunch of those like from McMaster.
Well, the best thing I ever did is the most expensive article clothing I had is my boots.
Yeah.
Oh no.
Yeah, I stand all day.
Red wings, I love them.
What we're doing right now, let's just run around the table and just say who our first names are. Carl, you're included in this. I know you're kinda hiding in there in your back. Um, and Niki.
Jay.
Arturo.
I'm Carl.
Jessica.
Jeff.
Steve.
Jay is one of the other directors at large at Pumping Station One. What we're taking today.
Many things.
Hopefully the business planning workshops is a good one, because you just have this driving need to.
Drive.
Drive. I wasn't quite smart enough. So what we are doing right now is mostly quiet work, although we've had some discussions, so it's not been that quiet. And this is the book that we're using. It's called Creative Entrepreneur by the assistant, Arvind. And she's having us synthesize an eight-part picture of our job for, not job, um, business idea. And that's the matrix. And so what people are doing, we've done drawings for each of these four pieces and tonight we're synthesizing that into an overall mandala. We've been bouncing these around as well for different businesses. Yeah, that's it.
We have bounds in the universe, cause I can live.
There you go. I like that. No, I really appreciate you coming, Carl.
That's a very compelling explanation to give you.
So hopefully it's that you're leaving because you are so full of ideas to write that you just can't go.
Well, just yes.
Just my guess.
Yeah, exactly.
But you're ready.
Thank you for coming.
You check my work. This is pretty.
Of course it's pretty. It's beautiful.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it.
Of course I have.
It's going right on the fridge.
Shut up, Jay.
You'd love to get a coffee fountain through my nose. Shutting up was what I was wishing it would.
Coffee fountain, coffee fountain would be awesome.
You like Dolly.
Yeah.
I would probably, Dolly would think of doing, I can create something else.
What?
But I'm pretty excited right now.
He's gone through a few iterations, kinda like with the current ones.
Because that would be a scratch piece of paper.
Right. So what would he, but what would he represent? This is very left brained. We're not like.
A savage dragon.
Right, but.
I don't think so.
Just go with it.
Well, the head, just the head.
I actually wanted a laser gun.
It's kinda like basing his body off of Puff the magic dragon and.
Yeah.
If I could, add LCD panels.
Add what?
LCD panels.
Uh, pyramidal.
What would the LCD panels represent if we're?
I have a friend who loves drawing just dragons.
So I could probably design.
I know a person who's way too into dragons. I don't think they draw them.
And then would you have video presentations, have all these concepts?
She asked her to draw anyone. She was just like, what kind do you want? I was like, I don't know. You know, your hair.
I have superpowers.
You want eastern, parent. I was like, I don't, I don't. I wanted to have a tail.
You were a pure dragon.
She was like, do you want to? Like, what's a tail look like? I was like, it's got spikes on it somewhere.
Well, maybe. What would the purpose of that be?
Yeah, no, she grilled me with a ton of questions. I really don't know. I just had it in my head and dragon is what happened.
What kind of dragon do you wanna draw?
Exactly. Which I eventually did ask. I said the only requirement was that it had kind of like a long gaited head, like a snow, that was like more triangular and that was about it.
Every dragon you wanna draw.
There is no color on this.
Or you know, move all my.
It was like, immediately I was just trying to draw it. It didn't look like the dragon from the bone. That was about it.
Isn't for everybody to hear, even. There are many different options. And the people that you let call it Trava, I mean, who would do a building that has to be this, right?
I would draw everything.
Okay, well, what about Arturo? Yes, whatever that is. You do need to do some of that, I mean, it's like writing journal exercises.
Have you seen Secret Life of Walt Disney?
I wanna, I wanna.
I'm still not sure on the bottom, so she's definitely not gonna be.
Obviously, you're not gonna do it.
He's the processor for.
You're not gonna make it obvious that he might have tracked down.
Uncle Bubbles might win out, but. I'm tempted to call him down.
I kinda like. It's like fantastical things and just like regular.
Actually, Martha is something I really wanna, I need to do a lot more research into like.
So it's very much like rainforests, what do I want?
Hawaiian culture, like, that's, I've been trying to like, that's actually kind of hard. I really wanna try and capture like the currents.
Instead of going to beach somewhere.
Yes, because.
It's a kind of industry stuff. It's a very solid background. What's going on in the.
I don't think my car is gonna make it.
I don't know what your class.
I was like, I don't think my car is like, I don't think your car is gonna make it.
He lives in a very poor family. He lives in a very poor family.
If you answer these, I'm gonna do, you'll know.
That's something we don't know, is this.
Yeah, there was also something else, it's like, I don't know.
Something we've talked about. We're not really sure if we had asked.
I don't know where to go there.
Possibly, yeah.
Once you have that, you've got. The mandala for you is waiting.
At least as a basis of the research, this will give you book recommendations.
The mandala. I did a couple things in my travels.
I'm really sharing. Um, one thing to note for those of us that are nervous about sharing, the rule that I have for sharing is there's plenty of places you can go for your sneak. Meaning, you can go anywhere to get somebody to tell you what's wrong with your idea. It's really hard to find places that'll say, yeah, that's cool, keep doing that, or, oh wow, that sounded neat. It sounds like a white watch sometimes when I explain them. That's the type of feedback that I'm looking for. It's really not. What I'm looking for is the catcher's mitt. That friend that you have that's, yeah, what's your next idea? Give to me. That's what we're looking for. So if you're willing to share, those of us that are listening to this, respect that in the same way that you would want that reciprocity. We're not looking for, even if you totally see how they could do it differently, better, you know, be totally profitable, that's not your point. It's not what we're looking for. We're looking for what works. This is kind of like, if you can't say anything nice, don't say anything. We're not looking for, even if you totally see how they could do it differently, better, you know, be totally profitable, that's not your point. It's not what we're looking for. We're looking for what works. This is kind of like, if you can't say anything nice, don't say anything. Yeah. I won't say anything now.
Obviously none of us can say anything nice.
I know. I like totally like conversations.
I was just doodling the characters from the comic. I was gonna.
Yeah? So do they, what does that mean to you?
I'm just, I just felt like drawing. Um, just like uh. You know, I kinda did the, the Mandela handwritten. Um, didn't really feel like getting that into uh illustration wise. So I was just thinking like, well, it'd be more productive to, to draw the characters themselves. Try to just get more, more expressive that way.
And are the characters representing the ideas in the Mandela yet?
No, not yet. They're just there. I just, I didn't, I wrote it down. I didn't really know how to visually like redraw it that way, so.
It might come to you. There's a way to do that. It might not in its words. And I think very word oriented. I do geography. So to me, words are images actually. Whereas Jessica, you've got, I'm totally dying to know what you've done because you've actually got like pictures of the faucets.
Well, I mean, I didn't apply any of my new ideas. It's just stuff that I wrote before when I didn't have an idea of what I wanted business wise.
How did it feel doing it?
It was pretty easy because it's just sort of, I guess, choosing the symbols that I thought. Kind of best represented the expression or sum it up the most and then blurring it on there and then seeing it up the page. If I didn't know what it was, then I wouldn't know what it was. So that's kind of hard.
I haven't seen it and I haven't looked at any of these and I'm just stuffing it, but I'm amazed to see so much color and um action going on. And it's upside down at the moment, so I have no clue what goes on in the Mandela where, but I'm like, I'm like that, that creative expressive ability of color and that paper. I'm, I'm simply amazed. I'm, I'm a stick figure kind of person. I would draw like Arturo and be, you know, I would go for this and I would get straight line. I was like, okay, I'll try some. So I'm inspired.
Oh, thanks. No.
I've only been here three minutes.
That's seriously cool. So what are the pieces meaning to you? Um. Like you've got gifts. What did describe to me what that picture says to you?
What it naturally or?
What it means to you? In other words, you do that instead of a cat. So what, what is that image to you? And don't worry if it sounds infantile. That's okay. That's probably your critic saying this, but don't start that ever. Let's be suspicious of the negative.
Well, I, I enjoy it to sort of represent resourcefulness, I guess. The fact that there's just sort of.
Oh, I see. This is a tool.
Like what I've been, kinda, what I've, what I've been told multiple times is, because that was one of the questions I've been answered, was like, you know, what do other people tell you that you're good at, but that, you know, we not necessarily think about, that you just do kinda naturally. Um, and I feel like I'm very resourceful, so I can take a lot of nothing and make it into something. And usually that manifests itself in a form of food because of the cooking. And so it's like, oh, there's nothing to eat. Like I'll go over to somebody's house, usually it's my boyfriend or something like that. He'll be like, oh, there's nothing to eat. And then I'll look in the fridge and then I'll look in the pantry and then like 20 minutes I'm like, here you go. Here's your fucking three course meal that you didn't ask for, but I ate it cause I can. So it's stuff like that. Or like. When there's an emergency and when, when it was like in high school and I did draw and stuff like that, but there was like an emergency and they're like, oh, we can't find this one thing. It's like, oh, you asked for this elaborately built hat that you need as a prop on stage. Here you go. Five seconds to cut it. Add it. You know, like stuff like that. So it's just really weird that I could see stuff and, and put it together rather quickly under pressure, I guess.
That sounds to me like a pretty awesome idea. Sometimes it doesn't work out, but most of the time it's okay. Yeah, that's awesome.
Superman has bad days too.
Yeah. And the meaning at heart.
Um. This one went back to the idea that you're, you're drawing emotions from people. You're making people, you know, feel strongly one way or another. So it's like either inspiring people, having like social justice and things like that, or breaking down to tears, having that.
That's not the justice gamble?
Yeah.
That's what that is?
And then the side is more like being able to, like I said earlier, work with your demands and to, to write and to just inspire other people. So that's I guess kind of what I thought about when you see somebody who's just filled with awe or inspiration or wonder in their eyes, just sort of like light up and they get a really big sign that they're on. And to me, being able to share that with somebody and to inspire them to, to take it upon themselves to do something for themselves is a big inspiration. Like it, it just perpetuates itself, you know? So that's important to me.
To give the, the effect though.
Thank you for trusting us to share that. That's pretty awesome. And then how's yours? You've got some theories too. Wow.
This is my. Hard meaning. Um, this is why I was kicking around the idea for the uh four plans, the pictures. I, uh, these are both mine. I enjoy photography and that was, I think it was calling or something like uh National Geographic. If I just got a phone call tomorrow that they wanted me to be their photographer, I would drop everything.
Awesome.
Same thing to go to space.
Do you know about the space thing?
Yeah.
We're working on that at Puffing Station One to put someone, the prize for the hacking competition, if you haven't done that, is to go to space.
Yeah, it's my one thing that when I was younger, I had a eye injury. So I have an artificial lens and I've always told my friends like, if that was the thing holding me back, I'd go get a glass eye.
Seriously? Wow, that's big commitment.
And you would go to space.
That is big commitment.
No, that's uh, no, cause I'm in a condo. I couldn't convince my girlfriend to go for the fixer upper yet.
It's okay, honey. He's just kidding.
Again, I guess my talent or gift or mechanical aptitude, I, some machines I get. And so that's two goals I have is a house and a car to just like strip it completely down and build it from the ground up. And I think that'd be pretty awesome. And uh, I think it was like important to us or whatever, but my, my immediate family, but more specifically like my little family union, including my fur baby.
I love that you have a fur baby. That's awesome. That's awesome. Well, thank you. Does anybody else wanna share where they're at? Even if you're like stuck, do you need some ideas or input?
Slowly working on Mandela. I was just thinking about leadership though uh this week. That is, you know, goals and eventually this is where I am now. So South Colombie kinda just sort of wrecked everything a little bit.
That's a nice.
Which is where, you know, Colombie generally sends all their graduates. Here's where I could wind up, uh, just with the welding and machinist classes I'm taking. I mean, there's a lot of money, but there's just nothing else kinda there is the problem.
Sure.
I had something for the arrowhead there.
Yeah, that's really tight.
But yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Options where I can end up. It's just where I'm wanting to be and where I'm gonna end up. They're not gonna be the same, but you know, priorities change every time.
Absolutely. And for those of you that are thinking, wow, that really sounds like me, um, the book, What Color Is Your Parachute is phenomenal. I know I mentioned that earlier. It's by Richard Nelson Bolles. Do the Jav Flower, if you haven't already. Stephen Covey made a point in his book, uh, the seven habits of highly effective people. And he said that you fight, you claw, you climb up the ladder, you get all the way to the top of the ladder, success. You look around, you realize the ladder's on the wrong wall. So asking these questions at this stage of the game is really important because you can't necessarily see all the way up there, but you wanna make sure that you're climbing the right wall so that you're not doing, if the machinist is totally not what you wanna do. Or maybe it's a tool to use that to climb up the wall, get over the roof and get out of the building that you actually want. Maybe.
What was the visual diagram inside and what collection?
It's called the Jav Flower. Yeah. And it's uh, in his What Color Is Your Parachute? He does a new one every year. He rewrites the whole thing from the ground up. It's pretty spectacular. I actually have four copies.
Probably had copies of in our, in our, in our library here.
Public library has them. You don't wanna invest in them now.
That's like developing the libraries, yeah.
Half price book, of course.
The only problem with half price books is speaking as an author, the author does not get any royalties from user purchases. So. If you're really, really wanting to support the mission of a particular author, please do buy from that author. And if you can, buy from their, their publisher's site and not from a third party distributor. I love Amazon, don't get me wrong. They've been extremely good to me and my co-author, but I get more royalties if people buy from my publisher's site. Not a lot of people have that. And support your local bookstore places if you don't look somewhere. Instead of like Target. Yeah, buying books from Target and Walmart is gonna put small businesses out of business and everybody at this table, that should matter too.
I have never seen a book ever return at all.
You would be surprised.
I, I've gone to.
They expand it there.
Sam Hayne, my publisher. I write male male romance, very small niche market. We've actually had one of our authors get the New York Times Bestseller list. Not just in male male romance, but there, there have been male male romances on the New York Times list. Um, they are in negotiations for having distribution in Starbucks stores. So it's, we'll see lots of trends changing. If you look at Barnes and Noble, and I don't wanna drag us off into publishing, but if you look at Barnes and Noble, their numbers are consistently falling because people are doing exactly that. They're buying Costco, Target.
That's so.
And the people that are shopping, the companies that are doing it are doing that value to profitability. And you bet they're paying attention to where are people buying their stuff.
Still can't go over the closing period.
That was like the best bookstore ever.
That was fucking amazing.
They got beautiful furniture.
Yeah.
Well, and if you like small bookstores, uh, support them. Go to Barbara's Books and buy something. Or they, or we will lose them as a community.
The one five being closed down to Palace now.
Palace is a small, they're, they're national, but they are a smaller, yeah. Palace are good people.
The reason about Prairie was that just closed down by, and then the church came up.
Yeah, well, it's, it's like the family run kinda thing and.
Yeah.
Well, that's what happened with um the company, Cowie Man, the photography company. They closed their doors. So, alright, so let's turn directions a little bit so that we can talk a little bit about guides. Depending on how open you are to sort of alternative ways of thinking that are not necessarily left brain, sequential, who are some of your guides? I think you had a great presentation that you could use to just sort of segue into this, or who inspires you? Do you wanna throw out some of those names?
Uh, yeah. Salvador Dali, Santel Valtrava. Uh, Karen.
Gabriel Garcia Marquez.
Uh, Nelson, Nelson de Grasse.
Pardon me?
Nelson de Grasse.
Oh, DeGrasse, yeah. I thought you said something. I, I need to irrigate it.
He's actually one of my favorite Polish people because he's a very social entrepreneur.
DeGrasse is?
No, uh, if you remember him.
Who else are here as, as people? Shelby?
Uh, more so Lee, Lee Iacoc.
Lee Iacoc?
Yeah. And um, but more recently Jeff Bezos. Uh, I can't recommend that book enough. It's, it's awesome. And it's just, I don't know if I could ever work for him, but. And then I just started uh the Steve Jobs biography too. And um, I do enjoy Apple and I have complaints with Apple, but like his attention to detail, I resonate with a lot. And like I, my first MacBook Pro, I opened up to swap out the hard drive for him and that was sacrilegious to my Mac friends, but that motherboard is just absolutely gorgeous. And like just his attention to detail and things that normal people would never look at. And it's, the book's really cool. It talks about how he got that from his childhood and his dad, but it's definitely too.
My father knows the guy that turns, turned him down like a bully zerox. And from Silicon Valley.
The best, uh, my favorite thing about the, the rise of Amazon was like Barnes and Noble at one point approached Amazon and told them that they were building a website and to just sell to them because they were gonna get crushed. And they weren't the only ones. There is a lot of companies that did it.
Reasons Borders went down because they partnered with uh Amazon. So any sales that went through Borders' online store, Amazon got a cut of. Anything that went through Amazon's online store, Borders got nothing.
Well, and also Borders is a very interesting case study for what we're doing here. Uh, this may be more business geek than what you want, but in their third quarter 2009 call to Wall Street, and these are all publicly available. Pure Mercury's been a publicly traded company. They give quarterly calls that are available on Yahoo Finance for free. You can listen to these calls. So if you're really passionate about Amazon, you can go on Yahoo and listen to Jeff Bezos talking or to his chief operations officer, CFO, or whoever they have doing the call. And Borders was asked by one of the uh investors on Wall Street, and I'm talking institutional investors, vice CEO, vice president of Morgan Stanley or whoever, um, what are you gonna do about eBooks, e-readers? And the guy had no answer. Six months later, they were out of business. That was in 2009. They totally like, they missed the boat on digital, digital publishing. And that is a really cautionary tale for what, we will be studying this later, doing the competitive analysis and understanding the landscape of what your business is. You need to know that stuff. Like what is Stan Lee doing? And what is Josh Webb doing? And what is uh, what's his name? Guillermo del Toro. How are they monetizing things? What is Warner Brothers doing? Because they did that brilliantly with Harry Potter. You might not like them. They might be the Walmart of entertainment. They might not be. I don't know what your feeling is on that, but what are they doing? What's going on with Comic Con? What are the trends? You need to know that. You don't need to know it's sitting here right now. But who else is inspiring?
Eric Paul, Rob Burton, uh, Rob Schrob, um, who of people have lost their contact information over the years, but I could probably find him. Yes.
I've been making note in your journal of these guys because these will become your guides. And you mentioned mom. I don't know if you were serious.
Was not.
Um, he entered, you know, always comes back to him.
That's a huge compliment.
That's also the other guys I actually work, uh, Mike Alrit, um, Gary Gianni.
That's the man I was trying to think of.
Yeah, uh, totally. Cool guy. I gotta give him another call.
His work is just beautiful.
Where's Eric Paul? He, he's doing the Big Trouble World in Chinatown. It's amazing.
I adore Big Trouble.
Uh, let's see, let's see. Ooh, uh, Amy Reid, uh, she's a new artist. Uh, really fantastic stuff she does. And um, Swarey.
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 Did you view this, Eric?
Uh, let's see.
Just S T U E R I.
Why, why?
What was his name? Chris, Chris Purit. See everyone's uh the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The horror blog.
What about you?
Uh, Mathias Adelson, favorite illustrator.
And they don't need to necessarily be in your field.
Yeah.
He happens to be though, right?
Oh, he's not in my fields. Um, it wasn't a field that I formerly worked in. He formerly worked in that uh just CG animation, uh, 3D modeling. And he got out of that and just draws the most beautiful stuff I have ever seen. And he got out of that and just draws the most beautiful stuff I have ever seen. Um, let's see. Do you know Stan Topless? Just 'cause when he works on a project, he'll just take it in whatever the hell the meant, uh, direction he wants it to go in. He did a stop motion, uh, TV show on, um, Cartoon Network? Oral, Oral. And, uh, he, he was a parody of, uh, what's it called? David Lyth. And on the third season, he just decided to take it in the darkest direction possible and it was gorgeous. They, they did not get picked up for another one after that 'cause it was just.
Too dark?
It, it was horrifying and it was beautiful. Uh, um, let's see. Marco Vayner, great writer. Uh, comic book writer, TV writer. He just writes for a billion and one things.
A lot of comic book and TV writers cross polity because understanding how to do screenplays is something you have to know, given comics.
Exactly.
And vice versa. Me. Say again?
That's really, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah, storyboarding is, if you can do comics, you can do TV or movies.
Or voodoo.
Yeah. It's a lot harder for someone like me to cut a screenplay, which is one of the major reasons I don't write them. Because the two things I enjoy about books are complication and description. When you write a screenplay, your job is on description, that's up to the director. And complication can't have 'cause it's only a hundred and twenty minutes long, so you need to have a really tight, clear story.
Sometimes a script might say, a person walked into this room and got injured, and then the actors and the director and the director actually make that an unforgettable moment.
And that's totally soulless to me. I would never write that. You can really do that with what you did. See, I find that visual hard, but the words are what.
The weirdness thing.
It is. Plus they're all, they're all present times.
Yeah. I mean, it's been like plays, right? Just regular theater, like.
It's.
I mean, it's, it's, that's what you're getting the bear bones of it, really. Like, don't care about.
There's a lot of parallels in theater and screenplay. The different, the major difference, actually Carl could probably talk to us about that, you know? Um, with screenplays is that you have the eye of the camera that you're performing with, whereas in theater, you're interacting with the audience.
That's true.
And that makes a big difference. But it may not make much of a difference to the author. I hope now I'm not.
I've worked on this. Actually, I've, I've performed in theater and I've worked with screenwriters and I've handled a lot of work. The strange thing is, that's all I know how to do sometimes. Like, I work with this screenplay artist and I tell him, hey, hold the camera at this angle, you'll probably get the best of the feel. And he'd be like, oh shit, I wasn't even thinking about that. And it's kind of like, well, but also with like directors, they have permission in mind where it's like, okay, this is the scene, how I want it to look at this angle with these, the audience facing theater this way. But then the screenwriter could say, oh, in my head, it was a different thing because I was portraying a middle class family, blah, blah, blah. But then the director came here and researched it everything. The same thing with like TV, that's what happens. It's like your research area.
Sure. Highlander has some great behind the scenes stuff. Um, and I actually got to meet the authors of that, which was incredible. Um, I got to do, I got to walk around and tell her what, what are the main authors and what difference she made for me. And she was really, I mean, she's on my Facebook. And we don't like talk, we're not tight, but I mean, it was very, she was really gracious to me and I hope that, you know, should that ever be reciprocal that I made it the way that she did. And one of the things that she said was that they would fight with this particular director that they had, and he would come up with these really great ideas for this location. And the guy whose job it was to create the location would be, I don't know, we're not gonna do this warehouse. Whereas if the writers said, okay, he's probably not gonna go through all that, just do a warehouse. He'd be like, oh no, we're not gonna do a warehouse, we're gonna go. And they actually found a place in Paris that is an abandoned subway, submarine base to do their filming in for this finale of season three, which is The Four Horsemen of the Apocalypse. And it's one of the most powerful episodes of the entire run of the season. And that was the case where the writers are like, just use a warehouse. And the director's like, no. And they found this place and the writers are like, how did you do that? And that's the difference. Whereas if you do it in the novelists, they're like, uh-uh. This is exactly how I had it, exactly how it's made. If it's blue, et cetera, be blue. I don't know that I ever want any of my books made into a movie because I think I would shoot the director. I'd be like, okay, we're done, 'cause y'all are got crazy ideas. I got to see Scott Teroux speak and someone asked him about that, 'cause he has a bestselling novel that got him into a pretty successful movie. And he, he talked about the novel and he said it sold X million copies and the writers and the audience were like, yeah! He was totally quiet, didn't smile, and I thought, huh, he's got a point to make. And he said that the movie made X number and it was like a factor of five million more sales, not dollars, people.
Yeah.
And the point that he was making was his book had to appeal to this reading audience. See previous reading, value and profitability. The movie had to appeal to a general audience, which meant the story had to fundamentally change, right? And that's a tough one. And that, as artists, we don't necessarily want to do that. But the better we can get at understanding what our medium is and what our actual gifts and flow are, the better we can create something that is actually remarkable. Like how I kind of spun that. So any other heroes?
Kai Kawasaki.
He's invented the motorcycle?
No, he used to do that. He was on the Mac, uh, he was on the marketing, he was the marketing person for their little Macintosh team. Then after they were big, so he won, his book is Rules of Revolutionaries.
I remember he showed me that, yeah. The other one I really adore for marketing is, uh, J Conrad Levinson. He's been around for a while, but he did the gorilla, he's got like, but it's always with gorilla marketing, blah, blah, blah. And he means guerrilla as in Ghibli, the small warfare against a very well entrenched wealthy opponent, i.e. small businesses competing with Warner Brothers or Amazon or whatever.
His name's J.
J Conrad, C O N R A D, Levinson, L E N I N S O N. And it's gorilla marketing. And just type that into Google and it'll give you twenty more books. You just poke around and see what one you like. I like Gorilla Marketing 101, 'cause I'm really a big favor of simple. And 101 is kind of his box briefly.
I can't think of the name of the book now, or the author. He was a CEO, president, um, I guess, was he gonna return? Whoever tried hard.
That's Avis.
Avis. Yeah. He wrote, he wrote, um, like, um, a very simple book that was saying, these are the rules you need to have. And he said, if you can't read the table of contents and find out what I have to say on something, or, and if you can't read it in a page or two, it's like, okay, assistant, like, um, like assistant secretaries to the vice president? He goes, you flip it up and you go, you know, what do I think of that? Get rid of it. You know? He was like cutting things to the bone. You can't find out what I have to say in the table of contents on something in ten seconds and find out what I had to say within two minutes. It's like, oh, my, my, up the organization. That's it.
Up the organization.
Yeah.
I like Peter Drucker. That's a really hardcore business one. And then there's also Deming. If you guys haven't heard of Deming, Peter Deming, uh, proposed in the fifties to United States automobile manufacturers, lean manufacturing, efficiencies, partnerships with other companies the American auto manufacturer sent to, to Deming. Went to Japan and then what happened? Toyota is what happened. And then all of a sudden, American companies are going, Mr. Deming, come back! And then he came back and it's, I believe what is also in fact behind Motorola is Six Sigma, I think is based on Deming.
Yeah. And then now everyone in automotive talks about Six Sigma.
Well, and the irony, my business instructor used Motorola as an example and he, we were talking about Six Sigma and some other quality stuff. And then he got quiet for a second and all the students are like trying to remember what's gonna be on the final Six Sigma or anything else. And they all finish writing, we look at him and he says, and Nokia beat Motorola. And then it was so uncut. It's a really tight lesson. It's not always about the structure that you build in a bureaucracy, so. How is that useful for small businesses is figuring out, get really tight, like you're saying, edit it down, get real clear on what you're trying to create, then you know exactly what your business is. And it doesn't matter if somebody else would do that your way, it's okay, you're not gonna do it that way. I'm gonna do it this way and I know exactly who my market is and I know where to find them and I'm gonna go find them.
Are you gonna go over elevator pitches?
For your business?
Just in general, say.
Today or at the, we're in the workshop?
In the workshop.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that. Jessica's gonna work on some stuff with marketing and promo later on, probably around, I think, May ten. And then, um, we can distill that into elevator pitches. Full disclosure, I suck at them. Everybody in publishing is like, you have to be able to sell your book in two seconds or less, like two sentences, just have to go, give me your elevator pitch. It, it, it's a book. You should buy. Seriously, I'm terrible at it and I hate them. I hate them. I'm a novelist, I can't do briefs! Twitter makes no sense!
And then I sat down at the table to tell you about this flowing number of pages per book.
Exactly. The hardest part I find is the synopsis, 'cause you start with one sentence.
It's like the Brady Bunch. It's the Addams Family.
And that is awesome. No, but that's awesome. That, what he just did is awesome. That's exactly what you should do.
It's like, uh.
X, X, Y.
Everyone praises everything because everything's gotta be a mashup of everything else. That's all that's left now.
Well, no, I think it gives people a picture and people want that soundbite. And where you sell it is, honestly, the readers that like our work want tightly written, well crafted stories with characters you give a shit about. You can't do that in Twitter. But to get you to buy, how do you shop for books?
The title graphic.
Huh.
Right.
Okay, yeah. And then, exactly. But that's what you gotta do is the author, you know? I mean, it doesn't matter if you've got a hundred pages of awesome, if you can't, distill it. So that's tough. The elevator pitches are a good idea. For those of you that aren't aware, the Field, the Strathmore Field sketchbooks are available,[1654.82]